I now call the July 5, 2016, regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote your presence by pressing your yes switch?
All council members are present.
Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join me for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the minutes of the June 21, 2016, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on July 5, 2016.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Miller. Are there any corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve by minute action the July 5, 2016, bills and claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Any abstentions? I would like to note an abstention of mine for the Casper Community Greenhouse. And please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With the abstention made note by Mayor Sandoval noted, motion passes.
Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action: by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes whereas the other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify law whereas resolutions and minute actions provide for council to carry out its business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items typically are routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council. There is a process for the public as well as council to pull an item from consent. Council will now consider establishing the schedule of future public hearings which are held for the purposes of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passing of the budget, and zone changes. Public hearings also require public notice via publication in the newspaper. Please read the consent agenda title.
Established July 19, 2016 as a public hearing date for consideration of council-initiated zone change of a portion of the South Poplar Street corridor from Old Yellowstone District and South Poplar Street corridor foreign-based code to R4 high-density residential and C2 general business.
The council would entertain a motion to by minute action establish the public hearing date just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Consideration of the next items will be by ordinance. Please read the consent ordinances on second reading by title only.
Item 6A1, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 13.20 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to Division III wastewater purpose definitions and abbreviations. Item 6A2, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 13.32 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to Division III wastewater sewer discharge regulations. Item 6A3, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 13.36 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to Division III wastewater discharge conditions. Item 6A4, an ordinance amending certain sections of Chapter 13.44 of the Casper Municipal Code pertaining to Division III wastewater violations and enforcement.
The chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the consent ordinances just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Powell. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consent. Consent now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 7A1, a resolution authorizing a petition for change of use from industrial pollution control remediation, reservoir supply stock and domestic to municipal use and change a point of interest and diversion, point of diversion and means of conveyance of the Amaco Oil Company appropriation diverting from the North Platte River to be submitted to the State Board of Control. Item 7A2, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Powder River Construction, Inc. for the school walkability project. Item 7A3, a resolution authorizing a procurement agreement with O'Connor Company for the City Hall boiler procurement. Item 7A4, a resolution authorizing acceptance of a community tree planting grant from Keep America Beautiful. Item 7A5, a resolution authorizing an agreement with Traffic Safety Services, Inc. for the Second Street Inlaid Striping Project. Item 7A6, a resolution authorizing a real estate purchase agreement and other necessary documents for the purchase of real property from the Donald and Mary Hembray Family Trust dated October 23, 1996. Item 7A7, a resolution approving a Natrona County Platte full-speed subdivision. Item 7A8, a resolution approving an assignment of the Wold parking space lease to the Downtown Development Authority. Item 7A9, a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of support for the Casper Natrona County International Airport's application to reorganize Ford Trade Zone #157 under the alternative site framework.
The chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Miller. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now consider minute action items. These are routine business items that do not require resolution. Please read the consent minute action titles.
Item 8A1, authorizing the mayor to sign a letter to the State Building Commission regarding the proposed state parking lot in the Old Yellowstone District. Item 8A2, appointing Kevin Hawley to a three-year term on the Natrona County Travel and Tourism Board, a term expiring June 30, 2019.
Chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent minute action agenda items just read.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Humphrey. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
With all members voting aye, motion passes.
That was quick. Now is the time we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. We ask that you please state your name and address. Welcome.
Mr. Mayor and council, Keith Goodenough, 333 South Secconi. Normally I wouldn't text in front of you but I have my observers out there who are going to tell me whether or not the mic's working tonight.
Sounds like it is.
Sounds like it is.
You think it is?
Yes.
All right.
Me and Krista worked on that for you today.
Oh, well, Mr. Mayor, thank you although it's for the greater good, not just for me.
Okay.
I'm here tonight to ask you to consider in the near future to create a plan to allow candidates for public office to use these chambers for the purpose of debates so that the public can become more involved with the process. We have a lot of problems, not just in Wyoming but in America, with lack of participation. All of the news media comes from the national level. You could ask most people who's running for president, they could come up with two names, probably, but if you ask people who represent him on the city council, they might have a lot more trouble. And so this is the only facility of its type in town, as far as I know, that allows for the live television, live internet, and archived internet. So I believe that the council should consider in the very near future allowing the chambers to be used for political debates for filed candidates. And I know in the past there's been numerous discussions about who could use it, who couldn't, who's going to decide. It seems to me if you limit it just to candidates that have filed for public office, that that would be a small enough group that the neo-Nazis and the neo-hippies and all the other groups aren't going to be clamoring to use the chambers. So I hope you'll do this in the near future. Absentee voting starts Thursday, 40 days before the election. For the primaries, some people have primary races, some do not. Councilman Pacheco has a primary race. Mr. Mayor does not. Councilman Kathy has a primary race. Councilman Miller has a primary race. Some people do, some people do not. So obviously the idea would be to focus on those people that have primary races and get those done first. There would be a small cost, I'm sure, but when you consider that about a year ago the council appropriated $43,000 to clean the statue outside City Hall, I think the cost can be seen as a relatively small contribution to the political process here locally. My idea, and I participate in many of the forums sponsored by the League of Women Voters, they're very nice people but it's pretty much a marshmallow affair. There's really not much of a hard-hitting political discussion that goes on. So I was going to offer to talk to some of my fellow former elected officials from the legislature, from the city council, perhaps from the county level, and form a committee that would oversee this effort, that would moderate and come up with the format to use. I think we could certainly come up with some sort of bond system if you want a bond posted for cleanup for this, for that. I don't think that would be out of the question. But it's true that this is the only option in town for a televised political coverage. And local news media is not what it used to be. 20 years ago, the local paper and the local news people had more interest and more time and more column inches.
Staff.
Had more staff. So I really think our democracy is suffering from the lack of knowledge. And of course, it's always a name recognition deal to a large degree, which is why incumbents have an advantage, but I think it's getting worse and worse. And I believe it was last election of the 240,000 registered voters in Wyoming, 90,000 did not participate. So that was about, not quite a third of the people two years ago didn't bother to vote. Now, some people would say the dead ones shouldn't have voted anyways, which is absolutely true, but most of those 90,000 people that didn't vote were not dead. So that's my request, that you consider it in the near future. I think it's certainly a doable thing. And I guess I would, I have one other issue to cover before I leave, but if there's any questions, I'd be glad to give you my opinion.
Should I just address that right now?
Yeah.
Okay. Council decided through very prudent advice that the equal access issue is a very big deal. And council has essentially recognized that about the only people that we can have in here are government-sponsored events and entities. Anything else proposes that situation that you alluded to regarding equal time. And it's sad that we have to consider that, but it's very real. And it's one of those cans of worms that come in a number 10 can, one of the big ones, that we cannot open simply by allowing only governmental-sponsored events in these chambers. For instance, an example that I heard of was the League of Women's Voters using these chambers and putting up campaign material that had to be removed immediately. So I don't want to tease you to say that council will consider that because it's really more trouble than it's worth.
I have a question, Your Honor.
Yes.
When was that decided? What year was that?
I think it was last year. We basically had a discussion. Yeah, it was like last year or the year before.
It's like every year.
Yeah. Do new council members not remember these discussions?
I don't remember.
I don't either.
I remember in 2014 when I ran, we used these chambers twice for a forum.
Yeah.
With the League of Women Voters put on.
And?
There wasn't any that I saw campaign literature on the walls or anything, but...
But you see the dilemma.
I do, but I also see his point.
And in spirit, I am fully on board with his idea, but just...
Would there be an issue with restricting, as he said, to just filed candidates? And I don't know if this is a question for the city attorney?
Well, we can discuss it, we can discuss it, but Bill, would you like to weigh in?
We clearly can discuss it more, but you do have an ordinance which follows state statute for political activity. And let me state this first. A city where a point of official employee shall not use public funds, time, personnel, facilities, or equipment for political or campaign activity unless the use is authorized by law, and I know of no other authorizations, or properly incidental to another activity required or authorized by law, and the public official, public employee, or public member allocates or reimburses the city for the additional costs incurred for that portion of the activity not otherwise required by law. So you have a unique situation where a person files for office but is not yet elected, could potentially use the chambers, but you couldn't do counterpoint because you'd be violating the ordinance for those who are sitting council members. It's just an inherent problem that's built into the ordinances and state law. And you also have, this is a limited public forum for legislative purposes, and you run the risk of when you open that forum, you lose that and it becomes a general public forum for all purposes. And for those reasons, in the past, council has made decisions to regulate the use and not allow it that way. I do think that Section 2.60.080 poses some serious issues for sitting council members because you really can't use this facility and those who are running against you can. And so you would have some issues under the ordinance. And state law.
Yeah. 2.60. what?
2.60.080.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
Well, I'll address you, I guess that poses the question, could these chambers be used for debates for, other than for city council or city government positions?
That's a decision you would have to make. That would take you out of the purview of this particular ordinance, but it opens you up to the argument that you have abandoned your limited public forum for the use of this facility and opened it up for a general public forum. Just like when people speak on the park, they want to use this as an area to express their views, whether you agree with them or not. So the only way you could do that is if you sponsor the government event as a city council and you open up your chambers for that limited purpose, but I have to tell you, there's a risk associated with that.
Charlie and then Ray.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I'm trying to recall this because we're talking about something that happened a couple of years ago and that's, I can't remember sometimes what I did last week, but we did have the forum here in the chambers.
Twice.
Obviously, we had sitting council members present. Did we have a discussion about the potential difficulties with that then? Do you recall?
That question was not posed to me at that time with the current city manager you had at that time. That was not brought to my purview or my attention or request. I've been asked tonight and I want to bring this to your attention.
Do you leave it noted? Ray?
Just a couple of things. I'm trying to figure out the timeframe because we did it in 2014 when Sean and I ran. We had two forums, I guess is what they're called. And I've known that there's been commissioner forums here, there's been several other forums throughout the years that this facility, that this chamber was used for. And so my only, I understand exactly, I mean, it's a slippery slope that I think if we start doing that, that we end up saying, okay, well, anybody can utilize that. But on the same context, I agree with Keith in the sense that this is a public, this is for the public too. So I mean, I don't know how we get through that for us to be able to deal with being able to utilize that like Keith is asking, because I do agree with Keith on this in the sense of how do we utilize it for people to also be using it for that purpose as well.
Well, I think the problem, and please correct me if I'm wrong, but the problem with, as Bill has pointed out, it's candidates who are not yet elected to office, they're general public, and through that, they have a toehold to say that we allow the public the use of these chambers. And that's just, you know, that's getting out the can opener and putting the number 10 can underneath the can opener and just not biting into the lid yet. Yeah?
It seems to me that the intent of that statute, and of course, you're the attorney Bill, now, the intent of that statute is to not create an unfair advantage for me to use this forum to campaign for myself to the disadvantage of someone who is not sitting up here. And having a forum where I'm sitting here next to my opponents and we're answering the same questions provides me with no advantage relative to those opponents. So I may understand the letter of the law, what makes it sound very clearly that as though we cannot sit up here and campaign, and I get, I understand what you're saying, but I don't think that was their intent in writing that statute. So I see the dilemma, I don't know how we would resolve that, but I, you know, I have always said I'll take that risk of turning this into a public forum and risk having some spectacles, if you want to use that term, but I also think we have the authority to set certain rules as far as the decorum and the management and the behavior and the paraphernalia that might be displayed. I think we have plenty of latitude to restrict those things. And so I would very much like for us to find a way to do exactly what Mr. Goodenough is requesting. I don't know if it's possible for us to do that or not, but I agree that more speech is good.
I want to order, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
The public says they can't hear Councilman Powell on the...
Again. What I said was really...
Don't want those old words to be lost forever.
What I said was very erudite.
Yeah.
I know, that's...
Councilman Miller.
What I will say about that, I think it is important to us to keep the integrity of these chambers for people to participate actively in the legislative process. So in listening to the city attorney Lubin, I think it kind of makes clear sense that we probably don't want to touch on this space, but I kind of agree with Mr. Goodenough in that we do have a problem with participation, citizen participation in government politics. And I think maybe there's some other ways we could be able to help spur some of this activity. And I don't know what the ordinances are on other city-owned property or even other type of forums areas, but that's something where we could be more creative with in finding a solution to help people have these discussions. Maybe not necessarily here because I do agree that it does place a different nature of why someone would come to these chambers, but we might have options with other spaces. And I think it's really important to get people together to have those discussions.
Well, I'm, you know, I'm thinking that the private sector can step up and do this too. I mean, the Casper Star Tribune has candidate forums and their editorial board makes recommendations based on those forums. And, you know, the Natrona County Library used to have a candidate forum. I can remember campaigning by answering questions in 2012. Is that a government entity? Did they slide that number 10 can of worms down the road and nobody noticed? I mean, what I want to hear from council is, do we want to discuss this further?
Okay.
Yeah.
I wouldn't mind discussing it further, but you hit the nail on the head, Mr. Mayor. The real issue is the facilities we have here available. We have installed television, we have a hookup to a cable channel, and it's perfectly right and legal if some entity wants to go out and pay for production, have it televised, and rent a room. There's nothing wrong with that. So if the League of Women Voters wants to do that, they're certainly entitled to go hire a contractor with a camera and then buy TV time. And that's, there's nothing wrong with that. But for us to put it on the public channel, I just see equal time issues all over the place, and FCC would be all over us. And so I just don't think we want to put ourselves in that room. But if you really want to do this, every candidate that wants to run chokes up a couple hundred bucks, you hire a camera to sit in some room, and there's lots of rooms to rent in town, and then you pay to put it on the local cable channel. But you pay to do it.
Right.
And that solves the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do agree with the lack of participation. You had quoted the statistics statewide. I even go back to the local election that we had here, the special election, with 60,000 people, 22,000 registered, and less than 7,000 voted. So, yeah, I agree with you there. To not televising, back in 2012 when I ran, actually, the Casper Star Tribune actually had, now, they didn't do it for the primary, but for the general election, they called both candidates in and actually had them sitting side by side at a table, filmed it, answering questions, and put it on their website for anybody to view at their leisure. So, and that was a no charge to anybody. That was a service that the Star Tribune did. So to a point, I again, though, have to agree with some of my other cohorts that this may not be the appropriate place. But if we want to discuss it, I have no objection to doing that at a work session.
Well, counsel, do we discuss it further?
I'm okay with discussing it further.
I agree.
Wait. So, yes, yes?
Yeah.
Okay, we will discuss it further. What's your other issue?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I might just make a couple of concluding points.
Yeah.
Obviously, the taxpayers built this building, they pay for all of this, so it seems to me it should be used for the public benefit. The city has an arrangement with Bresnan, a franchise fee arrangement. Bresnan has been getting the good end of the deal for years because the council has not required them to live up to all of the obligations in that contract. So it seems like Bresnan would be more than happy to come and participate because they're getting a sweetheart deal already because they don't have to provide what the contract actually says they have to provide. And with regard to the Casper Star Tribune interviews, Casper Star Tribune decides what issues are important, interviews people, and if you happen to agree with what they think's important, it's all for you. If you think there are other issues that should be brought up, then they're not interested. So it's a very limited forum. But I'm glad to hear you're going to discuss it a little more. The League of Women Voters has sponsored forums in here for years. I believe the Republican women got access and sponsored a forum in here not too far back. So for there to be a change in attitude all of a sudden, I just don't see the...
Well, all right. My next issue is...
issue is, I just wanted to make a comment on the appointment of Kevin Hawley to the Tourism and Visitors Bureau. And I have nothing against Kevin Hawley. I talked with him. He's provided me information on the franchise fee issue, where the city raised the franchise fee. That money went to the DDA, two-hundred grand, a hundred grand for two years for a project coordinator for the plaza. I talked with him about that after one of our public forums here. But my concern is that we are getting this political incestuousness. He's going to, the convention, Visitors Bureau is completely funded by tax money, the lodging tax. The DDA has gotten tax money from one cent money. So now we're going to have the director of the DDA on the board of the Visitors Bureau, and it just seems like there must have been at least one other person in Casper that the council could have chosen to be on that board that would not have the same interconnectedness that Mr. Hawley does. And nothing against him. I think he's a fine person. But I just think we have thousands of citizens in this town, and it seems like there's starting to be this habit of appointing interlocking, people with interlocking positions. Another example, I think Doug Folick is still on the Amoco joint, Amoco, Amoco joint reuse board. And so I thought that was another situation where it does the system no good to be appointing people to interlocking situations. So I just, I don't know if you want to offer, why you decided that, but it just struck me as odd that somebody that's already so connected is now going to be on another, in another spot allocating public money. Thank you.
So I sit on the CACBB board, and that board decided that Kevin Hawley, the majority decided that Kevin Hawley would be the best fit and brought that recommendation to us. And then that's why we voted on him. There was four applicants for that position, and he was the one that the board decided would be the best fit.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, if I could just ask, it's the city appointment, and so you're on there as a representative of the city, but the city has another spot, just like the county commissioners have two spots, I think it is, in Evansville and Mills and the Midwest, bar none. And so the board itself does not make the decision. You make the decision, but that was their recommendation.
Yes.
And why, why is it, instead of cross-pollination, you're thinking conflict of interest?
Well, I guess you could call it narrowing of the gene pool, maybe. I just think, of course, the DDA is heavily invested in a project downtown. Of course, they're going to want support from the Visitors Bureau because they are in the visitor business. And so it just, I just fail to see why, when there are sixty thousand, well, sixty thousand people in Casper, that it wasn't possible to come up with somebody who didn't have a direct interest in another slice of the puzzle. So...
Okay. Well, I would... Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just in response, in reviewing our packet and looking at that recommendation, I noted that the Visitors Bureau advertised repeatedly in the local papers and sources for applicants. And while there are sixty thousand, some in the pool, only four applied, and it was their recommendation, so...
Mr. Mayor, just as a final comment, when you, when you tend, call it the good old boy network, when the good old boy network tends to supply the personnel, then people start to think, well, why would I apply? Obviously, a good old boy situation exists here, and so I think maybe it goes back and forth. But there was three other people, I gather, so...
We might, in fact, be perpetuating the problem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, just so that you know, that you are an activist and not an agitator, staff has prepared some commentary to address the issues that you were concerned with in a previous appearance, and you can have this document.
Well, this is a startling development, Mr. ...
Anyone else wish to address council? Anyone else wish to address council? Please approach the lectern. Okay. Well, this is the time we go around the table, and we're early in the month, so we may not have very long reports. Councilman Powell?
Just great to hear all the kids shrieking as I drive by the new Mike Cedar pool. Nothing else, Your Honor?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Thank you, Your Honor. I don't have much of a report, but I will say I went and watched the festivities yesterday at the event center, and it was pretty cool to be able to see that. So thanks to everyone who involved with the city who put that on. It's a really fun time. And I have always got fond memories of the Fourth of July shooting bottle rockets at my brothers, so... That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Humphrey?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Councilman Pacheco?
Nothing, Your Honor, thank you.
Councilman Hailey?
Just wanted to see, we have a young man in the back. I believe he'd be a Boy Scout, is that correct? We'll welcome you to our meeting. It was a rather brief meeting. You got off the hook very easily, you know, but I always like to support our Boy Scouts and glad you're here to get your citizenship in the community merit badge. Welcome. I hope you gained something from this meeting.
Maybe we should redo the pledge.
Yeah, you want to do the pledge again? Councilman?
I'd like to just say that I've noticed some changes to the intersection of Robertson Road and the bypass. They've lowered the speed limit approaching the intersection, added bigger stop signs, some warning signs prior to the stop sign to let you know that there is a stop sign there. So they have made changes to the intersection. It was good to see.
Quick. That was quick. Vice Mayor?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Okay. I haven't had any meetings yet, so I will report when those come through. Is that it? Are we going to wrap this up this quickly? You know, when Goodenough was on council, he always voted no to adjourn if it was less than an hour.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
It may be less than, less than an hour, but we do have executive session.
Oh, that's right.
We have more time to go.
Okay.
So I would move that we adjourn into executive session to talk about personnel.
Well, let me, let me, let me read some stuff, and then we'll do that.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, July 12th. That's parade day, by the way. In the council chambers meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, July 19th, 2016, in the council chambers. The chair would, well, it's already got a motion to adjourn into executive session, and we'll reconvene in order to adjourn this regular session. We've got a motion from Vice Mayor Kathy. Who wants a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
This meeting is adjourned.